Okay, we're rolling this.
All right. Call the May 11 meeting of the West Dakota Water Development District to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have a flag up here. Since we don't actually have a flag, so. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America. To the republic, the Constitution, and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Second item is the roll call.
A roll call, July 13, 2021, West Dakota Water Development District. Coth, Yurkey.
Here.
Driscoll, here. McGregor.
Here.
Nodigal.
Here.
Rowe.
Here.
Mack.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
All present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I gotta correct what I said. This is not the May 11 meeting. This is the July 13 meeting. Please so note. Okay, thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda for today. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I got a couple.
Okay.
Let's switch, May 11 to July 13. And then down by Chair's comments, that's item 17. Let's make items from Directors 18, items from Admin 19, items from Public 20, and 21 for adjournment. That might have been correct, yeah, because it's showing that they're 12.
Okay, let me, I'm not sure if I didn't update something.
Seventeen, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen?
Yeah. It seems like there was just a slight numbering issue.
Yeah, I see that now. I didn't notice that before.
Well, I didn't. If you scroll along.
Pack it maybe, okay.
There.
Yeah, something like that is there.
Are there any other items that need to be added or changed?
Was that it, just that numbering?
Well, the date too. I read the date wrong. I should have noticed that, but it didn't.
On that one, it's correct, but on the one we have.
Okay, yeah, pack it. Didn't get that, okay.
All right, very good. Minor changes? Any other changes? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda? So moved by Tom, seconded by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carried. The next item is approval of the minutes from the May meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from the May meeting? If not, a motion for approval.
Moved.
Moved by Dan Driscoll, who says second.
A second.
Seconded by Wendy. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, conflict of interest. Are there any items on the agenda, today's agenda, that any director would have a conflict of interest on? If so, say something no. Okay, seeing none. Moving on to the Treasuries report.
Currently, our funds on hand are $564,164. We have, and that includes our savings plus checking plus our two CDs. We have a 12-month, which was just renewed, so I have slightly updated there. And then we have the 24-month. Appropriations, basically admin-type stuff, spent to date $33,663. And then for projects, $109,631. And that does include the USGS Canyon Lake sampling. And I will contact them to see if we're going to get a final report on that. So total expenditures to date, $143,294. And remaining in the budget total, $76,873. $219,168 for this year. Going to the, if there are no questions, I'll go to the projects.
Yeah, I've got a question. What's the distribution between savings and checking?
I could bring that up if you want. I try to keep a minimal amount in the checking.
Yeah, I'd like to know the number.
Okay, it's less than $10,000 in checking.
Okay. Basically, the tax from the Ongam, you put it in the savings and then transfer as needed, is that?
Correct, yeah. I usually transfer in five or $10,000 chunks, just to kind of keep things consistent. We do give a little bit of interest on the savings account.
Is that tax deposited by the auditor directly into the account? We don't get a check for it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep, and that, they deposit it into the savings. So the projects, unpaid project obligations are $213,672. And, you know, some of these we've paid off, but the big one is the Green Valley Sanitary, which will not come due this year. That will be next year. And that's it, Mr. Chair. Most are in.
Okay. Any questions for Dan on the Treasuries report? If not, then accept the motion for approval.
So.
Dan, Dan is second. Just hope.
Who made the motion?
Come on in. We find, you have a chair for her.
Here's a couple of.
Would you see if she could sign in?
I gave you some of those if you wanted.
I will.
And by the way, there's a restroom in the corner here.
So we have a motion by Dennis and just seconded by Dan Driscoll to approve the Treasuries report. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is an update from Banner on Task One, progress on the Missouri River Water Needs Assessment in nonprofit corporations. And we have two members from Banner here, Cheryl Chapman and Joe Munson, and.
I'll start.
Cheryl will start, okay?
Yes.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will, and again, thank you so much for the opportunity to work on this effort with you. I'm going to talk a little bit about the incorporation of a potential users group that you asked us to work with as part of that task. And then Joe Munson will talk about the progress on the needs assessment. Three weeks ago tomorrow, representatives from communities, Oglala Sioux Tribe, and rural water systems gathered to meet, to talk about whether or not there would be interest in forming a nonprofit organization to take a deeper look at additional water for western South Dakota. And that could take the form of other water sources, but it also takes a look at potentially Missouri River water as well. And we had almost 20 folks there. Dan has the sign-in sheet that we had. And of course, we had a few folks who wanted to come but weren't able to. The upshot that was, that the attorney that was selected to help with all of that is Talbot Wazorek. He's with Gunderson Palmer here locally. Talbot is a Mead County Commissioner, and he's also an attorney for several rural water systems in the western part of the state here as well. And the group, after Talbot asked a number of questions, everything from membership to a name of the organization, to what kind of work they would like to do. The group asked Talbot to come back with a draft set up, articles of incorporation. And so he has done that, and we meet for the second time tomorrow. And we'll be going through with a little bit more detail and making some decisions on some of those articles. For those of you who have been part of a nonprofit corporation in the past, they are pretty straightforward in terms of who are the members, how often do people, I don't even know how often people need is in there, but kind of the basics that are part of articles of incorporation. A couple of questions have come up that we want to run by you. One is whether or not, for this new corporation, understanding that you are not in any way connected with them in a formal manner, but right now, they need to put down a physical address for that new corporation. And they had a question of whether you would be okay if we put down the physical address of West Dakota for that effort. And it's to send in papers to the Secretary of State, of course, and be on the original
Any thoughts from your members on that?
Why can't you use Banner's addresses? It doesn't really make much difference.
I think right now, the address that he shows in the corporate draft is there, is the attorney's office. Am I correct?
That's for one thing, but then he was also looking for a second address. But would you prefer not to use the address of West Dakota, or?
That's kind of my personal feeling.
Okay.
But I don't know. It was board membership.
Yeah, I would agree. And this time, I think it's better for you, the attorney, or Banner, to function as the physical address.
Hey, Cheryl?
Yes.
This is Wendy. Well, obviously, this is Wendy. Why do they need a second address? Just an alternate type address? And if so, would it be possible to use Banner's Rapid City address, or?
Yeah, let's take a look at that. And I'll talk with Talbot as we meet tomorrow.
Okay.
And we'll settle on something. I think the important thing is we'll settle on something other than the West Dakota address for that.
Very good.
They have not decided on a name yet. He, Talbot has put a placeholder in there that says Western Dakota Regional Water. But, you know, we'll see what the group comes up with as they meet in terms of that. One other thing too, that I wanted to talk with you about, is that when you made the motion to have us go ahead on this task, there was an amendment to the initial motion for this task to hire the attorney to do the work at an amount of $5,000, not to exceed $5,000. And what I would request would be that, since Gunderson Palmer is the attorney for West Dakota, whether it would be appropriate, and you would be willing, rather than us to subcontract with an attorney, which is a little unusual, to just work and bill, have them bill you directly in terms of that. The amount would not change, but it would be your direct relationship with West, you know, hiring West Dakota to help with that.
I think we would need an agreement to do that, myself. What's the thought?
And if you're, if that would be okay, we can, we can work with Talbot to get that.
What's the problem with Banner doing it?
Well, generally, engineering firms don't hire attorney, law firms as a subconsultant. It's not, it is possible, but it's a little out of the ordinary.
Sure. Yeah.
I guess just from my perspective, I guess, being the one that made the original motion, you know, to get an attorney involved, and we incorporated it into the contract we had with Banner. My preference would be to have Banner handle that contractual arrangement with Talbot, since you picked it, shows him, even though it happens to be the same firm where we have our attorney.
Okay. Any other ideas or comments?
I would agree with Director Coth, just because then it is, we're not the primary, and then there's not separate billing, and then figuring out who pays who, and then we become almost like a tag-along if this organization owes money to the lawyer, and in future endeavor, they don't come hit us up and say, well, here's. So I kind of would like to see some separation between the organizations.
All right. Well, we'll set that up then.
Okay.
And take care of Talbot. He's done a great job helping us get documents together and help the group through those discussions.
Yeah, one thing, since I was at the meeting, he's very knowledgeable. He was a good choice, in my opinion, for being the attorney to get this input.
Very familiar with rural water system nonprofits, so, yeah.
Yeah, he did a real good job.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Dan?
Yes.
Quick question. Don't we normally, and this could be different because of the relationship that we have with Banner for this particular project, but don't we normally handle bills directly and pay them directly out of West Dakota? Don't, I mean, don't we normally handle those kind of bills, though?
You mean attorney bills?
Well, and again, this could be a different type of relationship, but I thought we cut checks just so that we know how much we're spending.
Well, we have, we do have a contract with Banner, which includes this $5,000 that we're talking about for attorneys, which, as Ron explained, was a, was an add-on when we made the motion to move forward with this needs assessment and formation of this nonprofit corporation. So at that meeting, it was, the motion was to include the engineering and the legal counsel for that, for putting together that nonprofit corporation as part of one contract.
Okay, and I remember that. Okay, just make it try and understand.
Okay.
Thanks.
So the group will meet again tomorrow, so we'll have more to report after that meeting as well. And it was a very good conversation. We had large communities, small communities, the tribe, rural water systems, a whole mix of folks, you know, just coming together to have a really good discussion about future water use and things like that. So the other part of the task then is the needs assessment, and Joe will give us an update on that. I'll just switch to the boss.
Yeah, appreciate that, that way we can get it on record.
Well, I'd like to thank the board for having me here today, and the continued effort that you guys have provided for this project is, has been great. Really appreciate the support of what you guys have done to keep this project moving. And it's, it's been a very interesting project for us to get involved with as well. We met as a subcommittee, and I kind of explained this, what was it, a couple of weeks ago, to you guys about the updated schedule. Where we're at right now, I guess, kind of looking at our original schedule, we were talking about an April date to complete some of the needs assessment. To say that that was a, say, I underestimated our time it would take to kind of engage with the future stakeholders of this, would be a little bit of an understatement. We're having great discussions and great topics and great meetings, but it's a large decision these water systems need to make, talking about 50 years, how much water they're going to need. And it's just a constant back and forth we're having with a lot of them. Moving forward with Cheryl, even just recently, within the last month, met with the city of Rapid City and their council. They want to move forward, are very supportive of their project. They had three individuals at the meeting and in, at the first meeting for that new organizational group, and are very active at that meeting, and they look to be very supportive of this project. I don't want to, so just kind of where we're at on schedule, we obviously did not meet the April deadline. That was, we're more looking towards the end of July to kind of wrap up information gathering, which will go kind of hand in hand with our meeting tomorrow. We're meeting in person with a lot of these systems, again, to discuss their new organizational makeup and bylaws and things like that. And who can be a member and that type of things will help us kind of do that. We are in the process of summarizing this information. We're kind of talking with the subcommittee. We're probably looking at the end of July. We need to pick a point where we're just going to stop taking in information from systems, and hopefully that'll be a good endpoint of all the surveys we've sent out and phone calls. And then we will summarize all that information, provide a written report and a hard copy for draft for you guys to review and look at, kind of what the end goal of this first task is, is to summarize what that amount of water that is going to be looked at. This is Task One of future tasks, which really gets into the engineering, where we look at alternatives and sizing. But we really just need to, this first task just gives us that amount of water. So we're, we're working back and forth with systems on trying to determine that value so that we can use that value to use, to go in and do our preliminary engineering stuff and look at different alternatives to bring water from the Missouri River out here. And then part of the other task will also look at other different sources of water and things like that. But this first task will be a summary of basically how much water is needed out here in the, in the, not just the Rapid area, but all of, almost a lot of western South Dakota is kind of our, our stretch we're looking at. Kind of summarizing what Cheryl said, that subtask of, to get the new organizational set up is really moving along well. We'll have probably a lot better schedule update for you guys after the meeting tomorrow. I'm assuming that will also take board-level action. So we'll probably meet tomorrow, review the bylaws, make edits, send it back and forth, and then they'll have to take that to their councils or boards for each water system, get authorization for them to sign. So that'll probably take at least a couple of months before that is, those members actually put pen to paper if they want to continue forward with that new organization. And knowing that it'll take a board motion probably from a lot of those systems to say, yes, we want to be a part of this, and agree to the bylaws that'll be presented to those decision-makers and things like that. But that's moving at a very good, faster pace than I thought it would. Talbot's doing a great job. Like Dan said, he's bringing a lot of, a lot of knowledge to the, to the table. And we kind of accelerated the process really quick. We're meeting three weeks after our last meeting to kind of keep the ball rolling and got a lot of momentum. Just to summarize things, looking forward, where we're going from here, you know, we're not going to request, and I've talked with the subcommittee, with the change in schedule, we don't, we're not requesting any additional fee or hours. Like I said, we thank you for the support you provided this project, knowing, you know, when this project was authorized. We're not planning on coming back to this board at the current time to look for any additional funds. There's some additional funds that Cheryl's been looking at. We're also seeing a lot of discussion about, you guys hear about it all the time, of the infrastructure bill and the money being funded and coming this way. We had a meeting in Pierre last week for consulting engineering firms, meet once a year, and they had South Dakota Department of Ag and Natural Resources and DOT say they're expecting a very large influx of money into this state. And hopefully, we can get a little piece of that pot to keep this, keep this moving forward. And with, that's, that's, will really go hand in hand with that new organizational, if that gets set up, so they can be the ones that apply for the funds and not you guys. So that's, that's the, would be a giant step to get that organization set up so they can look at future funding for this project to keep it moving forward. I think we got the ball rolling. It's rolling really good, and if we can keep that going with finding that next source of money, it'll just keep the momentum going on this project. So that's kind of my summary, my update. I would, if you guys have any questions on where we're at.
Hey, questions for Joe or Cheryl? From the board?
I think Ron has some.
Ron does, okay.
Just a, you've provided the subcommittee with updates on the number of inquiries and the number of responses that you received. Can you share that generally with the board so they have some perspective of what you sent out, what you've gotten back in terms of responses from these various entities?
Up to date, I would, I don't have the most up-to-date number because we've gotten a lot in here recently. We've sent out 40 originally, and then recently, we've sent out an additional, another request of over 80. And then they're coming in, we're at 15 million gallons a day, is what I have written down is what our request is. That does not include the city of Rapid City. The big players that we've received so far is Rapid Valley, Box Elder, West River Lyman-Jones. I missed one, Cheryl.
Those are the big ones, and then a lot of smaller ones.
Lot of smaller ones. I don't have the exact number. I can get that for you on where we're at, because it's changing on a daily basis. I had two phone calls this morning from individuals. I think people are getting, hearing it, getting aware of it. Yeah, I received two more today. So it's a constant changing, changing number, and I can give you an update on that.
Do you think there will be some new members at the meeting tomorrow?
Um, I don't know if we'll have any new members at the meeting tomorrow. I think the players we had are the key players that, that we need at that meeting. It's kind of what Talbot said, you know, at certain, in order to be a member of that nonprofit, they have to probably be a rural water system or a community. Some of those smaller homeowners probably don't qualify to be member of a nonprofit, so they would have to be served from like, let's say, like a Rapid Valley would have to serve a homeowner's district type of things like that. So that, that'll simplify things a little bit, but we'll still quantify those numbers because we have those populations and their water usages in our report.
Okay. Any more questions for?
Cheryl mentioned that the tribes were also there, or a tribe, or more than one?
Oglala Sioux Tribe has been the main player so far. I think them, and we've had a lot of interaction with Rosebud as well.
And, you know, Oglala Sioux Tribe is really the owner of Minnewichomi, so they're key, you know, they're, they're, it would, again, we're talking bulk water. We're not looking at duplicating anybody's system. And so they, there's interest in additional water there. So there are still some big numbers to come in that we're expecting that number that Joe gave you to be quite different with regard to that. You might recall too, we talked about these small users, and that was part of that big mailing that Joe mentioned. And we, we don't think those numbers are going to sway this in a tremendous way, but it is getting the word out there by letting folks know that we're taking a look at this. And then Commission Chairman Gary Drew, Pennington County Commission, asked if I would talk to Jennifer Seitzma, who's the new executive director for Black Hills Council of Local Governments. So I had a chance to visit with her and kind of, you know, show her what we're seeing. And it, and it, she's hearing it from different perspectives too about, you know, just planning for water as many developments are popping up all over the hills and things like that. Where's the water coming from? Who's coordinating that? Who, you know, other than an individual-by-individual kind of permit application? So what, what's happened, even though it was a more narrow question, it's raising a lot of big topics and big public policy issues. it's raising a lot of big topics and big public policy issues, I think as well.
Um, we, we did get a letter dated today from Joe regarding um, what their proposed schedule is going forward, I guess. Did everybody get a chance to see that?
Yes.
Did you see it, Randy?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'd like to, I think we ought to just have a motion to accept, accept this as the current project schedule.
I submit to take the banner letter as the current project schedule as, as amended from the April twenty twenty-one deadline to, with the finish of report by September twenty twenty-one and then an official presentation at the October meeting, which is the nearest meeting.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Scott, discussion.
No.
I'd like to clarify that that's going to be the final report that we receive in September.
Is that right, Joe?
Um, if you want, I can give a draft hard copy to you guys to review and then a final presentation in October, if that's what you would prefer. If you want to review it before we put it into final.
Sure, I think we should review it.
And then we should see it in August.
So, what's that?
We need to see it in August, then we want to finalize it in September.
Would you be coming to our October meeting then?
I think that would probably be the best, would be.
Maybe a lot of change after the October meeting date then.
Well, we just need to be sure that we're going to be done when we get to.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be final by the end of September and presented in October.
Okay.
And that would include both the um, incorporation status as well as the needs assessment, is that correct?
The actual scope of what we're performing on the incorporation is, I think we're almost, we're just presenting bylaws to these people. It's not up to Banner to make them create an organization. I don't, I think that's.
Well, and that's to my point.
Yes.
We, we don't need to be a part of that ongoing discussion either. So we need to have a, a time when we are done and you are done with the arrangement that we have with you. And so if that's October first or whenever our meeting is, I guess that's what I'm saying. We need to do versus have a, you know, these drafts and then reviews and then something else. We need to have a time.
Should, should, should we, uh?
I think where we're at with the new organization, getting all those people in the building and after this meeting on the fourteenth, I mean, at that point, I mean, it's up to them to keep it moving forward. I don't think it's up to you guys as, as your project or as Banner as our project. So I think we'll really get an understanding after the fourteenth, but I don't think, Banner won't be really involved in making them, you know, sign it or not sign it, but we've got them going in the right direction at that point after tomorrow's meeting, is my opinion. And we should be wrapped up with that, with any type of interaction with your board and Banner with regards to that new organization at that time as well. Whether that they've actually incorporated it or not is not up to us, so.
We just want to close out our, we just need to have a date so we can close our.
I agree, I agree. I mean, anything past that, we're, yeah.
Okay, because I, I think tomorrow, uh, the goal is to appoint, place at least five directors, maybe something said seven, you know, and get the, the water users involved as a board of directors. An initial board of directors.
So it shouldn't be a problem to have a report as the status of that by October and then they do what they do after that, but we are done, you know.
We will summarize where it has gotten to at that point and say, this is where it is and this is now in their hands is what I would anticipate being put in that report to summarize that scope of that work in that report.
And we'll have the final report presentation in October with this completion essentially, near the end of September.
Yes.
Okay. Any, any more questions?
I'm confused as to what the motion is.
Did you get the motion?
My understanding of the motion is that we accept the dates in proposed in Banner's letter of July thirteenth with the proviso that they come to our October meeting and give us a final report.
Yes. Yes, I think that's, that's the correct language.
Yep.
So as Dan's putting that up, does everybody understand the motion?
So these are basically completion dates.
Yeah.
Milestone.
Yeah. Okay, is there, as he's typing, are there any more questions, comments?
Yeah, I was just saying that it would be my understanding that our contractual obligation with Banner would end at that time.
Yes.
And that we will be billed by then or before then for the balance due of what we've approved.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's the main thing is we pay the final balance.
Okay. All right, seeing no more discussion?
So the motion, I had a motion by Mac, I don't know if there was a second.
Seconded by Scott.
I seconded.
Yes.
Thomas made it.
Yeah, Thomas made it, seconded by Scott.
And the motion by Mac seconded by McGregor to accept completion dates in July thirteen letter from Banner with the final presentation at our October twenty twenty-one meeting.
Correct. All right, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same fine, motion carried. All right, thank, thank you and thank you for giving us an update.
Yeah, I really do appreciate the board's support on this project and.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Yeah, see you tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, that's, uh. I guess, I, I guess that was, I had them eight that we actually, wasn't it?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, kind of missed that, okay. We're moving on to item nine. Cheryl, do you want to introduce this item?
Oh, sure. Um, so, um, Dr. Lilius Jardine is here to, um, to speak to us about some mining, um, proposed mining issues in our area. And since we are talking so much about quantity of water usage, I thought it would be, um, a good thing to have her come and talk to us about it, so.
Okay, um, okay, you're by the mic. Excellent. I was just going to say, come by the mic, very good.
Yeah.
You have the floor.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks to everybody for having me here today. I'm, uh, my background is that I started working on research on water issues in the Black Hills in about nineteen seventy-nine and have worked on them periodically, but quite steadily for the last fifteen years or so since then. Um, my information that I want to bring to, to the board today has to do with water quantity primarily, although our organization also deals with water quality issues to some extent and our organization is Black Hills Clean Water Alliance. We study mining issues primarily, water and mining, those are the two, two main things that we look at. And I think that this discussion is particularly useful given what was just talked about. Because, and I'm going to contact Cheryl and talk to her some about this as well. Um, there are three major mining projects that are trying to get underway in the Black Hills right now. One of them is a uranium mining project in the southwestern Black Hills. Um, this project is over twelve thousand acres of land at this point and would use underground mining, in situ mining, using water uh, to pump uranium out of the ground. And the project would include four thousand wells and um, would pump the water through those wells to get the uranium. And um, it would ask for permits from the state for over nine thousand gallons per minute of water for the life of the project, which could be, depending on which of the documents you pay attention to from twelve years to twenty years. So that is a substantial amount of water. Um, and it would be a substantial amount of water to give free to a Canadian company. So, a Canadian Chinese company. So that's one project. Um, there are then two proposed gold projects in the Rapid Creek watershed, so within Pennington County. And um, one of them is by a Minneapolis firm called F Three Gold. The other is by a Canadian company, Mineral Mountain Resources. Um, they're both just getting into the exploration process at this point and have asked the Forest Service for permission to explore on, uh, public lands. So I looked up what, I wanted to get some idea of how much water a gold mine uses. And I looked up the state's water permits for Wharf. And Wharf has permits for about one point eight million gallons of water per day. And about three quarters of that is either, excuse me, used in the mining process or stored as wastewater or sedimentation ponds. So that takes a lot of water out of our rivers and creeks and groundwater, to the extent groundwater is used. So if you add these projects together, uh, two gold projects would be about three point six million gallons of water per day. And the uranium project again would be just over nine thousand gallons per minute. And I've done the math on that, on how much per day and per year and so forth. It, it goes off of my calculator. The numbers are too big for my calculator, so I, I don't have them for you today. But I just want, I just want, encourage you to, yes.
I have a question on, on the volume of water in the Rapid Creek drains basin that you just, uh, is that surface water?
Um, the.
Or is it groundwater?
Okay, at this point, the one company has applied for groundwater for a bit of its exploration process. But um, the entire projects would be within the Rapid Creek watershed. So whatever happened on the surface and, and they're talking about large open pit mines would, you know, run into the Rapid Creek drainage. I don't know if they would apply for some groundwater or not. And the main reason is because in the central Black Hills, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but in the central Black Hills, they have what's called a crystalline rock aquifer.
Right.
And it's, it's not like an aquifer on the plains where it's flat and spread out over a long distance. It's sort of spotty. So they probably would have a, a bit of difficulty determining how much water was where.
I was just here because of the surface water, I mean, there's, have they got permits from the state yet or?
No, there's no permits from the, they have an expiration permit, excuse me, the one company has, do both? Or just one, I think, has an expiration permit from the state. They, that's the Mineral Mountain Resources by Rochford. They've been doing some exploratory drilling over the last couple of years. Um, just a little more than a handful of holes. But they do that on private land, so that's why I need the state permit.
Well, if they have taken surface water, I mean, uh, there's surface water, right? So Rapid Creek and Rapid Drainage, Rapid Creek Drainage, so they'd, they'd be really juniors or any.
Yeah, water is a big concern, for sure. Yeah, the, currently the claims by these two gold companies, um, underlie, have, are for mineral rights, underlying twenty-four percent of the entire watershed. So these projects could end up going different places over time, you know, but right now they're looking primarily at Jenny Gulch, right upstream from Pactola and in the Rochford, just east of Rochford area.
Are there maps, have they presented maps?
Yes, I have, I have maps of the claims, I could get those to you.
I'd be interested personally to look at and see what, what they're proposing.
Yeah, we have it down to the quarter section, so.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's something that I think, you know, as West Dakota Water Development District, we're, we're concerned about that water usage, you know, in mostly in Rapid Creek drains basin and Spring Creek and Battle Creek.
Yeah, and I, I think with all due respect to the, the engineers who have been in the room, I think that there is a lot to say about protecting the water we have before we start thinking about pumping more water in. It would be a lot less expensive to protect the water we have. And I'm going to call Cheryl and talk to her, you know, about, I know her, so I'll talk to her some about that too. Make sure that goes into the needs assessment process.
Well, this, Cheryl, you handed out, uh, are you going to take, you want to?
Well, I was just going to say, I just, I, I saw this resolution that, um, and I thought that it would be interesting for you all to have copies of that, so I made copies for you.
Somebody need?
Yeah, I have more, um, if you want. Um, and it's a resolution to support the creation of a recreation area in the upper Rapid Creek watershed.
Dr. Jardine, did you have more that you wanted to continue?
No, I, I think you got the basic information, but I'll take questions, whatever, if you have them as you talk about.
Anyway, I, so I would like to propose that our, our water dis, us, um, that we would, um, write a resolution, um. Well, first, let me just say, I, I think that we should change our mission statement to include the word quantity along with the word quality of water. That's the first thing I would like to ask, if we could do that. Because we're talking a lot about the quantity of water that is going to be available. And we talk about quality and conservation, but we, I would like to see where it says, uh, quality. So evaluation and protection of our water quality and quantity, putting water to beneficial use for domestic municipal industrial irrigation as well as recreational purposes. So that, I would like to propose that we would add the word quantity along with the word quality in our mission statement.
Are you thinking about having a committee take a look at this?
And then I would like also to have a committee, I'll chair it, and um, that we as a board could write a resolution about large mining projects, water usage potential or in, you know, other municipal, um, industrial, um, usages, large quantities like that. So I gave, I gave a copy of this resolution, just kind of give us something to go by.
It does say quantity, you said the Rapid City, uh, City Council approved this resolution?
Yep.
Did it?
I'm pretty sure they did, yeah.
So it does say quality, quantity under, you know, what I asked.
Theirs does. Our mission statement has quality up there, so I'd like to have quantity added along with that.
Would the board be interested in having a committee, have Cheryl, would the committee take a look at this? Come bring it back in our next meeting? I personally would.
Sure. Do lawyers have to get involved in this?
If you use this.
But whose toes are we stepping on when we restrict water usage in for mining and stuff like that? Are we stepping on the state's toes when fighting that or?
It would be, well, I mean, we don't have the power as a board to, um.
We don't regulate it.
To regulate who gets the water usage.
We don't.
So it would just be a statement from us as a board that we care about the quantity and quality of water.
Water permits, whether the groundwater or surface water has to go through the Department of Ag and Natural Resource, Water Management Board, uh, to get a water, to get water right to using any waters in this, in the state of South Dakota. So, um, what's, what's the other directors think about having a committee put together, take a look at this?
I'd be in support of the committee to look into it. I don't know if I would go fully a hundred percent full on resolution since we are more of a funding type board, we fund projects. But I do think in the mission statement, since we are trying to deal with a quantity issue with our Missouri River project, and that does seem to be something, maybe that should be looked into. I think the missions, possible mission statement, if it is not already listed somewhere else, would be something worth a look, but that's just my opinion. Is that I can see that supporting the idea of also protecting our water as a large resource would be interested, I'd be interested in supporting.
Well. In our mission statement, while it doesn't say quantity, it does say conservation, which to me implies that.
Well, historically, gold mining companies in the Black Hills have not done a very good job of maintaining water quality with super funds and so forth, so, and especially the Canadian companies. the Canadian companies.
And we were warned that that would happen.
And we were warned that would happen, and this costs billions of dollars, and you're treating water day, 24 hours a day up there at Glen Mine.
How can Canadian companies come down, who lets the Canadian companies come down to the United States and do this water?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
Well, once you're here, it's the state board who gave them the permits.
The state board didn't?
Yeah.
Our state board?
Our state board gave them the permits and refused to set adequate bonding levels for recovery.
Yeah, they, it was very small amount of bonding money, and then they, they went, the companies, some of them went bankrupt and just left and just left.
And then the state, state stuck with the bill, right?
State, federal government of the state, taxpayers.
Ta, well, right, us.
Anybody else opposed to having the committee? Well, who wants to vouch for that? I would say a committee of three, so Cheryl.
I'll serve on it.
Scott, anybody else?
I'll serve on it.
All right. We got a committee of three. Did you get that, Dan? Cheryl's the chairman, Scott, and Dennis.
Cheryl, do you know what the city has settled that resolution?
I don't.
Is it just laying there?
I don't, I, I think they, Lily, I think they signed it.
This what?
If the council, the city council has signed this?
Let me make sure it's the right one.
I have a question.
What the date is on it?
August 20.
Oh, August, haven't signed it yet, probably.
Oh, that one does. This is not the one that was signed, there was one they signed.
Oh, there's another one they signed?
There was one they did sign, this was not signed.
This isn't the one that, okay, I just, I grabbed it off the internet, and I thought that that was...
Do they can get the one they signed off the internet?
I'm sh...
I don't look on there.
I can, I can get it.
I'm sure they can get it.
Okay. Dr. Jardy, what exactly is a recreation area, is that just a...
That, that's a proposal by an organization called Rapid Creek Watershed Action, which is a coalition of, last time I looked, about two dozen organizations and businesses, and they are working to get a congressional act to declare the upper Rapid Creek watershed a recreation area. And so, like Sheridan Lake is a congressionally set recreation area, but Pactola and Deerfield are not.
Yeah, I, I see it now, here.
Yeah, that's, that's their information.
So that's a pretty big area. I was just curious, okay.
There's a lot of issues, the economics of water resources in the hills are changing, and we're becoming more prominent with tourism and recreation, and less dependent for the economy on mining, forestry, forestry and grazing.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm wondering how much of this mining are gravel quarries, and how would that be affected?
Gravel quarries would, my understanding from, of the Rapid Creek Watershed Action recreation area ideas, that gravel quarries would not be because, not be impacted, because they are not under the 1872 Mining Act.
Oh, okay, that's good, Joel.
That's my understanding.
Another question, it sounded like there were a couple issues with the committee, that there's a resolution in our mission statement, is that, I'm just trying to get a one sentence synopsis of what the committee is.
So we can do, the committee could work on a resolution, and then I would also ask whether we can add the word quantity in our mission statement along with the word wanted, quality.
Change our mission statement?
Just change the mission statements, to add the word quantity, because we're talking, I mean, we're talking so much about quantity of water in the future, the usage, that I think we need to add that word. I know that conservation is there also, but I think the word quantity needs to be in there.
I got it.
Okay. Well, I think as a chair, I, we, Dan, I think as a chair, I just kind of signed the committee.
Right, we all need to vote out the management.
Okay, you got your marching orders, I guess. Thank you for volunteering. Anything else?
I'm available, if you have any questions, the committee has questions.
Okay, well, thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Put the quantity.
Water quantity and quantity.
That would be good.
Okay, moving along here, item number 10 is approve renewal of the annual lease for our office at the garage at the current rate of $400 a month.
I think this is a fairly straightforward item. Our administrator has recommended that we renew our, our office lease there, it's a pretty accessible place, except for the last year, but we have the door locked most of the time. So hopefully that changes.
I finally got the combination, so I can get in now.
Just drive in.
Well, we need a physical location maybe to keep our stuff, and then because Dan does have office hours when the door is open, it's a reasonable place for people to come. So his recommendation in mind is to, is to keep a physical presence at the garage at a $400 a month rate.
Is that a motion?
It would be unless he's gonna change.
Well, I, no, I was just gonna say, I have talked to the management about their lockdown requirement, and Kelly is the lady, she's gonna get back to me, but she has not yet. She said that's a good question, it left in her bag, so.
Okay.
I'm trying, because that's kind of not crucial, but it should be accessible.
Yeah, if we do have some continued blocking of the door, maybe when you're there on office days, you can post something exterior that says if you want to get ahold of me at West Dakota, I'll call this number or something. This is something that we're making a deal where it says no walk-in visitor, you gotta pile up the door.
Share a secret knock. Says, come in, Eric.
So that'd be my motion, would be to approve the renewal of the lease at $400 a month for discussion here.
Seconded by Linda. Discussion on the motion.
What is our lease year, what's the term, what is our calendar year? August, August, August.
Okay, so we need to...
Seconded?
Linda.
Linda.
Any, any discussion?
So I have motion by Coles, seconded by Harris, to direct admin, to renew the office contract at the garage for another year for $400 from...
Yeah. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carried. Thank you. Item number 11, approve renewal of insurance from the South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance. That's your item, huh?
I guess I'm the treasurer, so I get the default deals on cash.
Yeah.
Anyway, I don't know a great deal about this, other than Dan has investigated this liability, and I guess I'm not really sure what crime insurance is, but our rate is like $1,760 a year.
Yeah.
Maybe you can tell us what crime insurance is, I guess it's a liability.
I was afraid that might come up. It has to do with embezzlement. I, I could, I may have to find out, or the person we deal with in Rapid City is on the west side, and I have to give him a call and kind of refresh my brain, but this is something that they did before I came on, and when Bob Williams was treasurer, we investigated it, and it seemed all makes sense. It protects you guys from me to an extent, and gives you some protection, too.
Do you know the, the differential cost of the strict liability and the strict embezzlement of crime insurance, you know, those two rates combined, what is, what's the...
I would, again, apologize, I definitely looked at it on the day. We did look at making some changes at some time, and decided that they really benefit us in terms of cost very much. I could do that, I was thinking, because I haven't gotten an invoice yet, they're, they're kind of slow, and I get things, tend to get things at the last minute, maybe the board could approve payments on the condition that you agree with, that the treasurer agrees with paying it, and then I, maybe I get the best, I guess, I guess.
The question is, what, from last time, what's the renewal year?
Yes, I was gonna ask.
It's August, well, that's when I get the invoice, I guess, I can't remember, I'd have to hold that up again.
You need it on the...
Yeah, can we take the, the next meeting, get some more information?
We'll postpone until the next meeting, so we can...
Let's do that. All right, we'll, we'll wait till the next meeting and get...
So he won't take any action, I won't take any action.
I'd like to see our policy again.
Yeah, it's in the office, so you're welcome.
We can, yeah, get some more information to the board members before the next day, then we'll act on it at that fee. So no action tonight on that one.
Chair?
Yes.
If I could offer just a comment on that, I would, again, you gotta work out the details, but I personally encourage the board to retain the airs and the missions and the crime or whatever, we had a, a situation with our office manager a few years back, who relieved us a bunch of money. And once we figured it out, it was nice having insurance, they came in, took care of everything, you know, brought in the forensic accounts and all that sort of stuff, so it worked, it was a reason, it was a good return on our investment, it's not what you ever want to have to do, that's the nature of insurance.
Do you think it's more cost effective to go insurance as opposed to a bond?
I...
Dan was just bonded for...
Yeah. I, I do have a bond on myself. Yeah, I mean, we have to be, well, as the treasurer usually, or maybe, yeah, I mean, I'm bonded by the district because I'm the treasurer, for instance.
I, I paid for my own...
You may have it for your...
I forgot the name of surety or something.
Yeah, somebody's side there, but this, this is more of a, a protection for the district.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just, you know, and I just, was said earlier, there's currently worth of half a million dollars in, in the accounts, and my suspicions are that banks out here, no different than the ones back home, if Dan walked in tomorrow and said, I'd like to take all our money out, please, and put it in this account, they'd just go, okay, because he's Dan from West Dakota.
There's not anywhere near enough to make you want to.
Well, I'd love to, as well, that it wasn't worth it. I didn't want to go on the lam for, you know, $800,000, but still, others may not have that approach, and again, our case, we, it was pushing fifty grand, or was funneling the accounts, so.
So do you use the South Dakota Public Assure the...
No, we have a different crew, if you're still looking around, shoot me a note, so I've got it when I get back, and I can tell you who we get our, we get our insurance through a firm out of some falls.
$1,760, is it?
Aye. That's one of those bills I don't look at.
No, okay.
You know, we're gonna, we're gonna pay that bill no matter what it is.
East, East Dakota has a lot more money than we do.
You've got enough money for this.
All right, all right. That was Jay Girwison, by the way, East, East Dakota Water Development District.
Oh.
Okay, so next meeting, we'll have some more information on that.
Yeah, I wanted to suggest in Dave that we not do this, I just wanted to know more about what we really have.
No, no, that's good, I mean, again, with all that, I think...
Okay, no action on number 12 this afternoon, let's move, moving on to number 12, I assumed, that was number 11, number 12. Approve funding of $15,760 to the US Geological Survey to be used for operation and maintenance of two stream flow gauges, which we've been doing for quite a few number of years, and those two gauges, is one is located above Deerfield Reservoir on Castle Creek, and the other one is on a tributary of Rapid Creek, west of Rochford, called Rhodes Fork. And the information presented by the USGS is in the packet. And Joel is here from the USGS, if you have any questions, or if you have any comments, Joel?
Well, I guess I would just, is this okay here, Dan, or should I be over there? Yeah, put the mic over there, just so we get you on the right... Yeah. Yeah, Joel Peterson, US Geological Survey, here in Rapid City. Yeah, I just wanted to thank the board for their continuing support of these two gauges, they're, we've enjoyed a, a relationship for a long time now, and, and these are a couple really unique gauges, unregulated, natural flow, really gives us a good scientific view of what the status of the aquifers are in the upper Black Hills. They're not ones that, they're ones that are really good to operate, just because they are unregulated, and, you know, there, there isn't a lot of withdrawals, there's not irrigation demands directly on them, I mean, obviously further downstream, but just really gives a good health status of the, the aquifers up there.
How long have we been doing this?
Well...
Helping out?
Actually, I don't know, the gauges, well, Castle Creek is, has 73 years of record, but I don't know of that period what West Dakota has helped with.
This is inflow, right?
Yes, yes.
I know West Dakota funded those when I worked for the city, and that's over 30 years ago.
Yeah, okay, so.
It actually wasn't that long ago, the, the gauge above Deerfield had historically been funded by Bureau of Reclamation.
Oh, okay.
At one, they reached a point in time where, you know, basically the inflows to Pactola or into Deerfield more or less equal the outflows, and so from a management standpoint, they're able to manage their reservoir without the knowledge of the, of the inflow, so, so they decided to drop that gauge, oh, it seems like maybe a decade or so ago that, that West Dakota...
That gauge that's below Deerfield, is that funded by the Bureau of Reclamation?
Yes.
Then, and a partnership, that includes a few other partners, though.
Yeah, I knew they funded that one below there, we thought they did.
Then, then the one on Rhodes Fork, that had been installed as part of Black Hills hydrology study and funded through the duration of it, and, you know, at some point in time after that, I think, you know, Water Rights Program had funded a few of those gauges for some number of years, but I think it was not too long beyond the end of the hydrology study that, you know, DNR got out of the game, and, you know, West Dakota stepped forward, so.
Yeah.
Probably close to 20 years on that one, anyway.
Okay.
Been a long time since I read anything that referred to the party, the first part of the party, the second.
Any, any questions for Joel? Yes, you.
So these are just those two, what about those other ones that are along the creek that are, you know, closer to town?
Yeah.
How are they funded?
Well, I, it would, we have to be a specific one, I mean, we have a whole coalition of partners.
Oh.
There's a, a met worn system that we work with, Pennington County and the city of Rapid City.
With the management?
Yeah, and they're, they're for flood warning.
Yep.
And, of course, then there's the ones above and below Pactola, you know, those are funded by city of Rapid City, Bureau of Reclamation, many of these gauges have multiple partners.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so, yeah, that, down here below the water treatment plan, of course, is funded by the city of Rapid City, and...
We just, we have one on, one of our properties, this one.
Which one is that?
Um, in Dark Canyon.
Oh, okay, that's a met worn site.
I just weed whacked around it the other day, so that this guy has access to it.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Joel?
Chairman, I'd move approval of the USGS funding request of $15,760 to be used for the operation and maintenance of the two stream flow gauges as detailed in the proposed agreement that USGS has presented to us, and authorized signature of that agreement.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Cheryl. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's item number 13, update on our three erosion control projects in the Rapid City area, this is for information only, and, yeah, this one. Thanks.
Thanks, Lily.
Thanks, Joel.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joel, for coming.
I just saw a...
There's water going through them.
What's that?
Say the gauges, I hope we still have water going through them.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. There're the, there're two that are kind of outstanding this year. There're two that are kind of outstanding this year, so.
I just thought I'd give a quick update on, uh, what's been going on with our erosion control projects. I'd first start out by thanking the folks that have been, were able to come and assist with the work that we were doing. It was, you know, some of it was kind of brutally hot days and it wasn't the most pleasant working conditions. And so really appreciate, you know, that people were able to show up and help. And for those of you who weren't able, don't feel guilty about it. This is, this is kind of above and beyond the call of duty and it's really, you know, best suited for some of us old, old retirees that, uh-
Easy.
Have the time to do it, but, uh- That aside, um, basically going in order of, of, you know, I guess the first of the projects we'd funded was the one at the School of Mines and, and they're totally up and running with everything. If you've not visited it, it'd be good to go take a look. I haven't seen, you know, they, it sounded like they put up, you know, a certain amount of signing in there and I haven't seen any of that.
I haven't done that, yeah.
But, uh-
How do you, I haven't been to it at all. Do you go through the back part of School of Mines or how do you get to it to look at it?
It's basically on the far southwest corner. Easiest thing, I'd show you on a map, perhaps, at the end of the meeting here at, uh-
Or call you?
Yeah.
Try to go look at it?
But, uh, anyhow, it's up and running and, you know, I guess our obligation there, you know, I don't know if we've received the final bill from them, Dan, but, uh, you know, I-
Not, not the complete bill, no.
I don't, I don't think we have, you know, much left to do on that one, but, uh, kind of see how things go there and what they end up learning. Our project with the city over at La Croix, uh, we've done nothing yet. I had talked with Scott Anderson and we both agreed we wanted to, you know, leave that one on a, on a back burner until we got through the heat of the summer a little bit. And, and also until we'd done a few things at, at Star Village, so. Star Village has really been our mainstay and, um, probably did quite a bit more there already than what I'd anticipated we might. And probably the main reason is that, you know, Linda Harris came up with this idea that we ought to check on whether or not we might be able to get some of that sediment they dredged out of Canyon Lake, you know, to use as topsoil in there. And, um, they said, yeah, we could do, they could do that. Um, you know, we thought maybe it'd be possible to have it delivered, you know, on the north end of our project area, which, you know, was going to require building an access trail in there, which we, which we needed anyhow. So, so we went ahead and, you know, got a contractor to, you know, do some dirt work in there. It turned out that they weren't able, they weren't going to take trucks up there. They said it was too, too steep for them and it really doesn't matter. We've needed the access on it anyhow and we're going to need it for a lot of other things. So the, you know, the sediment ended up going up top on the flat spot, you know, on the, it'd be the southeast corner of things there. But I think there's on the order of, uh, probably twenty side dumps of material that, you know-
Twenty side dumps up there now?
Yeah, which is, uh-
That's a lot of wheelbarrow fulls.
Yeah.
So, uh-
It's nice though.
You have a different way of doing it than wheelbarrows, okay?
Well, we're gonna be looking at some innovation. It, uh, there's, there's going to be a lot of labor involved over the years, but, uh-
Over the years, okay.
Decades.
But anyhow, we got the road in and basically having the road in really required that we protect it from eroding and from tape bringing sediment down. So, you know, that required construction of, uh, you know, a bunch of silt fences in there and, uh, we needed to put some wattles around the perimeter. So while we're having wattles made, I had, you know, the wattle guy make up, uh, you know, a pretty big load of them and, you know, we did a little experimenting with, you know, placing them into some of the gullies and, you know, see how well they end up trapping sediment over there.
You might explain what a waddle is.
We went through the wattles there at the last meeting. Maybe you slept through that.
Yeah, waddle one or two.
It's the erosion control socks, so.
All right.
And anyhow, we also did get a, a load of power poles from Black Hills Power delivered up top that, uh, you know, at some point in time we can, you know, look at, you know, building some of the retaining walls around, uh, up on that northeast corner. But, uh, I see in the budget it's something a little short. The treasurer's report, a little short of four thousand dollars that we've spent to date. It's, it's pretty, pretty minimal as far as expenditures. So, things will be kind of in a holding pattern for a while here. I guess my main next effort will be to kind of start meeting with some of the conservation groups around the area and, you know, try to line up, you know, more volunteer labor for when we're ready to go more into production is kind of a, to me, a main need, so. I guess that's all I've really got on, on that one, just, uh-
Fires and everything, right?
No, that was all-
It was up on top?
Up top, so.
Yeah, we're waiting on that.
We're, we're untouched.
Okay, good.
Dan?
No, I actually went to Canyon Lake and got a trailer load of that sediment. Um, it's very heavy, but seemed like there was a lot of clay in it. Is that a good thing, bad thing, or?
Pretty steep.
I think for what we're doing, we, we're gonna need dirt and in whatever form, and I'm sure we're gonna mix it, you know, to some extent with, you know, compost, you know, the- They talk about the, the problem with, you know, pesticide in the, the compost at the landfill, but, uh, I'm told that that's effective only on broadleafs and it is fine for growing grass. So, uh, you know, I would, I would guess, you know, whatever the, you know, the makeup of that sediment is when, uh, when mixed with compost, I'm sure it'll be well worth the money in the long run. Which was zero, of course, so.
They haul it for zero?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Can't beat a better deal than that.
That was a good deal. That's a huge pile.
Almost as good as you and I labor. And we don't charge anything either, do we, Ron?
Do we have any photos on the website yet?
Um, no.
We got a photo of us three over at the School of Mines.
Yeah, we, I have some photos of those, but they're not, they haven't been posted. I'm thinking when things- Cool down a little bit.
Yeah.
There's, there's been a lot of work done on that, over there at, uh, Star Village, I mean, for-
And you got the-
It just got too hot to be there.
Yeah, it was getting pretty hot out there, ooh.
This next week isn't looking too good either.
Any more questions for Dan on that one? All right, we're moving right along then. Item fifteen, overview of potential projects with city in Pennington County.
Oh, we got a backup fourteen.
Did I miss one?
Forty, there you go.
Publicity on-
Oh.
On these things.
All right, discussion on the ways to highlight and publicize our erosion control projects. Sorry about that.
Well, I guess just several different things there, um, you know. One of the things that I'm inclined to do, I guess, is several kind of subtopics here, but, uh, I think it would be, it'd make a nice topic for South Dakota Public Broadcasting to, you know, follow what we've done up there and, you know, where we're going with it. I think it could help us in generating volunteer labor and things like that. And, you know, I had talked to Seth Tupper whether they would be interested, and he said he thought they would be, you know, they'd probably want to come around when we were, you know, doing something, working on things, you know, to where they kind of get some action photos and whatnot. And, um, I told him, my intent was to basically put it in front of the board and see if we'd got a consensus, you know, that we could do that. I don't think we need to really vote on it or anything, but I, I was reluctant to just make the decision on my own, so.
I think it's a good idea.
I'd just like to hear from the board. You know, I see some heads nodding. Do we have any-
Anybody object to it?
Any objections, right.
I would say proceed.
Yeah, definitely.
Oh, I think, I think it'd make a good storyline for them and I think it, you know, get some mileage for us. One, one of the other things-
Go ahead. I just have one suggestion. You include the public media, private media as well, like KOTA. They have more viewers than the public does. I tend to believe. I'd reach for both, do both.
Sure.
Couldn't hurt.
Good, good suggestion.
And there was, you, somebody mentioned Boy Scouts, possibly getting Boy Scouts to help?
Well, that was great.
Three, four age clubs, too.
Four age clubs would be good.
Homeschoolers.
You know, you know, get, get the word out that way. Those kids will tell people, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I, you know, you had emailed, uh, Lilius on, you know, to try to get it on an agenda. I had never heard back from her, but, you know, we can shake that tree again. But I think there's a, you know, a lot of groups out there that, you know, potentially could help, so, you know. So one of the other things I'd kind of like to be able to do would be, um, think about, could we develop a little bit, you know, more visible, you know, webpage or, you know, the like for things like this? You know, ways to recognize the groups that have helped us, you know, to, to date, I mean, game and fish with the sediment, Black Hills Power with, you know, poles, uh, groups that actually show up with volunteers to help. You know, the one day we had at least one person from Black Hills Fly Fishers. I'm sure we're gonna have, you know, more of them in the future, but, um, is, and, and, you know, you mentioned the pictures. And, um, I guess that's probably standard procedure that you can post things like that, correct, Dan, but?
Yeah, and I actually was gonna talk about the website a little bit during admin, but, uh, we can talk about it now, too, because there's maybe some changes that are gonna be going on with our webmaster. Yeah, right now I can just, I basically just put together new things and send it off to the webmaster and that might include pictures, uh, links, things like that. It's mainly just that, that you don't get things so cluttered up and links that break and links that are gonna be consistent, things like that.
I guess one of, maybe one of the other things I wondered about, should we be looking at other platforms such as Facebook or, or the like? You know, are there better ways to, you know, get the word out on some of these things? And I guess one of the things that kind of jolted that, you know, Dan, when, this'll tie into the next topic, but when we visited with the city folks, you know, they talked about, you know, Facebook is perhaps a way to announce when we're gonna have workdays and things like that. You know, until now, I just kind of email people, but, uh, to date, we haven't done, as a board, haven't done anything with Facebook, correct?
Not, not that I know of.
Not that I know of either.
You know, I don't know that that's anything we need to decide here tonight, but I guess maybe what I'm just doing is raising the question, should we be, you know, maybe looking at some things like this?
I guess I have a quick comment on that. I'm, I'm in a bee club, you know, for beekeepers, and they have a Facebook page and they have a webpage. And there's not, things don't get updated at the same time and people get confused, so you gotta be careful if you decide on something, you have constant maintenance on it. So, I'm, I'm not against it, but it's gonna take somebody to maintain that, post the events, things like that.
Tom, you have something?
When, when you-
You say, oh, you say, you have something?
I do, yes, I just have a quick comment on that. The other thing about website pages, which I agree, you just take some monitoring and I don't foresee this becoming a site like that, but a lot of times, like, our, our neighborhood website page becomes a place to take, um, you know, it's a place sometimes confusion. And so that would just have to be closely monitored, a place to come and complain about this and that. So, it, it can quickly become a site like that without somebody, um, an admin watching it closely. I was gonna, I'll second Wendy's point. That was exactly what I was gonna bring up, is with Facebook pages, sometimes, depending on how well you lock it down, they could spiral out of control. And with Dan's only use, you know, for eight hours a week, he may spend all eight hours filtering things and we don't, we want our admin to actually do admin work, not, uh, put out fires from random comments. And that's kind of my concern as, as a board member and as someone that has used that platform.
Okay.
Otherwise, I think it's a great idea. Um, I just have seen a lot of them like that, that, um, just get out of the, yeah, like that's, that just gets out of control. And all it takes is one, now I'm able to do that, so.
Okay, thank you. Did you have something, Cheryl?
Yeah, I would just say, if we just had a section, another, um, section on our website for, well, we have that under projects, but, um, and just really kind of maybe even put that on the homepage, you know, as a spotlight of something that is being worked on, you know? So people don't have to dig too deep.
So you're talking about project work, workdays, things like that, or?
Cause you have the, um-
Cause here, here's, here's a projects page.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't change much.
No. It just lists.
Missouri Water, you know, I've been trying to keep the latest documents on there, so they have links to the reports and things.
I guess I'm thinking more of like a highlight of it. So people are gonna go to the homepage first. They're gonna see the homepage first. So maybe if you had like, um, you know, in, above that, um, above the meeting there, you would have, um, kind of a highlight of a project, of this project specifically.
Okay.
So it would be on the homepage, so it would be more visi-, more visible, so they don't have to dig too deep. If they did have to dig too deep, nobody's gonna ever see it.
Okay, so just so I understand, so when you say this project, you mean the ongoing work, or?
Something recent.
Yeah.
Yeah, something recent.
Yeah.
Something like a recent highlight, sort of a heading?
Yeah, and then, so don't bury it too deep in that projects page. Put it on that homepage. And then I also agree about the Facebook. I mean, Facebook's a great place to ask for people, like the paddlers and the, everybody, you know, that fly fisherman, to get those guys riled up and get them to help. But, um, maybe there would be some other ways we could do that, not having to worry about admin of a Facebook page, cause that could just get really bogged down and messy. So I'd say just do the website.
Can you pull down some more?
Sure.
You know, would there be a spot like on that page just to have a word?
I'm, I'm sure there is.
And pictures.
I, I just want to state that I'm not a website designer. You know, I used to do webpages. I don't anymore. Because if I start getting into the weeds, I found out as different browsers came up, you'd get everything looking really nice on this browser and then somebody would switch to Firefox and it, everything was broken. But maybe this is a good time to mention that currently our tout advertising, who does our website, I, I kind of give her the general layout and the files and things. And, um, anyway, they charge twenty dollars an hour for, um- To work on a website. Basically, yeah, most of it is meeting upgrades and things like that, but also this kind of stuff. It usually comes out to be about a hundred dollars a month. She wants to basically revamp everything because the, and I'm not speaking from somebody that knows what I'm talking about, that's why I'm kind of fumbling her out a little bit. But apparently, a lot of things have changed and they change how they do webs, webpages. And things like search engines are affected, like if your webpage isn't done in this new, using these newer methods, it won't show up in searches, stuff like that. So there'll be a flat fee of about three hundred and sixty dollars to do that, and then their maintenance fee will go up to fifty dollars. And then their maintenance fee will go up to fifty dollars. If I say twenty dollars an hour, it would be, it'll go up to fifty dollars an hour. However, there'll be a lot more things that I can do, so potentially the cost benefit will be such that it might actually work out to be less money, but I don't know if that's gonna be the case or not. And I, I've got to learn how to make these changes myself, so.
They, they, yeah. They made the applications to do the webpages and everything way easier than they used to be.
So you're, you're familiar with it, okay.
Yep.
Cause I used to give into the HTML code and.
No, you don't have to do that. You don't have to do that, Dan. They made it way.
Some suggestions, just, cause the, it seems like stuff keeps getting added, but nothing really goes away. Sometimes I try to bury it a little bit more, some of the older stuff.
Oh, yeah.
This is kind of in a way a, a database of what our organization has done too. People can go in here and look at the various reports.
Well, are we kinda, it sounds like we're in for a change on, kinda this whole website arrangement. So it sounds like the best thing for us to do is wait a little bit on, on anything we do here. I mean, there, there's no rush on anything here and, you know, discussions regarding Facebook, I mean, that's my reason for putting it on the table, you know, some of these things, maybe we're better off, you know, shying away from some of these things, but.
There's no rush, however, tout advertising does want us to migrate over to this new method. And, and I'm, I'd like to recommend that we do it. And then just.
Sounds like we.
She didn't say they'd quit supporting us, but, um, it's getting to be kind of a convoluted mess as, you know, summarizing the way she said it.
Is there a timetable for, is she suggesting?
No.
Just.
I was, I was hoping to just maybe next meeting, make a decision on it.
Okay. Sounds good.
Jay might have a.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Jay Gilbertson.
Okay, good.
Uh, just thinking on that and in light of, I mean, kinda Dan's thing and everything, uh, some of the comments. Perhaps with, with Dan is talking to your consultants about putting this together is to, would be to point out that one of the things that you would like in maybe in the new configuration is a, a page or some way of highlighting more current topics, of short-term duration, rather than, again, if the old model sounds, eh, once it went up there, it simply stayed and you'd have to scroll through the deadlines, so that might be.
That might change.
But a, a accommodate some of Director Driscoll's needs for the erosion project to raise public profile on something that is only gonna be around for a little while. Rather than, and so instead of going Facebook, which is much more nimble in that regard, but I would wholeheartedly agree, you wanna stay away from stuff, you do that sometimes. If, if the website were a little more amenable to, you know, if there was a hot key for current activities or something, maybe that would be.
Yeah, I, I think it might be important to somehow have it obvious right, right on the homepage.
Right, yeah.
Having everything there.
Current, current stuff, whatever.
Yeah. Well, you, you'll get some more information and bring it up the next meeting.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Dan, I could help you with the helping, I could help you with that, the website decisions and stuff.
It might even be good for you and me and Tracy from tout to get on the call and so I'm conveying exactly, or at least approximately what she was really saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kinda covers my admin.
Lynn, Lynn has got a comment here.
Well, you mentioned that the sediment was delivered as well as the power pools. Would it be appropriate to maybe send them a letter of thanks?
A thank you note?
Kinda got to where letters so seldom get written, you know, I'd, I've emailed them with thanks and, and thanked them, you know, over the phone and whatnot, uh.
And I, I thanked John from the game for some.
Yeah, I mean, as long as they know that, we really appreciate the extra effort.
I was, I was out there and they were loading the stuff up.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, it was a good, good timing for us, very good timing. All right, let's, uh, let's move along here then. Item fifteen. More viewer potential president of Rapid City in Panhandle County, assistance with and involvement in public education slash outreach and public involvement slash participation components in the MS four stormwater permit process, projects. I'm a little bit familiar with that, but Dan's gonna present.
Right, the, the chairman and I met with the folks from the Rapid City Stormwater Program, you know, we've been talking with them for the better part of two years, you know, I guess in terms of potentially working with them in some sort of fashion on, you know, stormwater related projects and, um, you know, at one point in time that we had actually, they had asked us to send them a letter stating interest in working with them on an update to their stormwater master manual and it, at some point in time, they kinda changed their perspective a little bit to wondering whether maybe it might be most appropriate for to actually have us more involved with, you know, basically the, the MS four program, it, it's for, it's an EPA requirement for communities of ten thousand and, and larger to, to have, uh, you know, the stormwater management program, um. Two components in there, they're, they're pretty similar. One is public education and outreach and one is public involvement and participation. And they thought maybe those things would be a good fit for us and, you know, we'd said, sure, it, it, it sounds like it, so, you know. Basically what they came up with, they, they, uh, they've got a marketing firm that they work with and, um, basically they're wondering if we would participate in funding, you know, help fund, uh, this thing and that, you know, we'll, and we'll probably have a proposal for that, um, at our next meeting, is I guess, I, I suspect. I, I think where, where we left it was that they would contact Pennington County. Pennington County also is considered an MS four entity, you know, they, they basically have to have one of these stormwater permits with EPA and, you know, they, basically their jurisdictions overlap and so, you know, in essence, they could be working together on that, so. You know, this will change a little bit. I guess the, the main thing that I was gonna bring up is that, you know, it, it wouldn't, I, I don't know exactly how it will, it would evolve, but, you know, I guess the role, a role that I would really see for West Dakota would be, you know, in essence, being kind of a lead entity on this public involvement and, and participation end of things. Education and outreach, I mean, that's things like, oh, they might, that, that can be done in various fashions, you know. Stuff that you can take to the schools, you know, hands out, hand out for school kids, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and, you know, we'll see a proposal on, on that end of it, uh. The public involvement and participation end of it, really what we're doing with our, our erosion control work and then this stormwater project that we've had, you know, we've done an inventory and, and I would guess that, you know, in the future, we're gonna start working with entities to actually do a bit of stormwater mitigation here and there, find some areas where we've got, you know, the, the impervious surfaces that are draining directly into gutters and look for ways to, to improve that. Anyhow, all of these things would really fit well with their public involvement and participation, you know, end of things. I guess the, I just kinda wanted to get it on the table, um, you know, I, it, it could involve, you know, kinda meeting with groups like the Fly Fishers, Clean Water Alliance, you know, et cetera, et cetera, and you know, I, I think that, I think that what we're doing here really, you know, fits with it already, but, uh, I was just any, curious if there's any reluctance that we would pursue things like that, you know, it, uh, it might end up making just a little bit more work for us, you know, go to a meeting here and there and talk to these people, but, you know, it kinda feels like we're gonna be doing that anyhow and, you know, I'm happy to volunteer for, you know, carry the brunt of it, but, uh, I just kinda wanted to get it on the table, a heads up and see what the thoughts were.
One other thing, uh, they do have this poll from Midwest Marketing, uh, to do what Dan was saying, but, but one thing I think from West Dakota's presented, if we, if we did put a little money into this, uh, marketing proposal, uh, it's forty seven thousand dollars is what they proposing. If we put some money in, we can get some recognition at least in participating in, uh, that type of program, you know, getting that information out to the public. So that's something we might think about too, is whether we'd like to contribute some money towards this, uh, marketing program that they're proposing.
Hey, Dan?
Yeah.
I think, I think this is a great idea and I think this is also a really good way to get the exposure that Dan Driscoll's talking about with asking for participation with our groups like the Boy Scout, I think the Boy Scouts, four H, um, Girl Scouts even. I think that's a fabulous idea.
Good, yeah, all right. Anything else? We gonna talk about that or is that enough? Okay, thanks for your input. That moves us to item sixteen, approve the draft two, twenty twenty-two budget and letting out the publication in the official newspapers prior to the August meeting. Who's her name in that two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have Dan help me with that. There's like three things we have to do here. Um, one, we have to approve our, um, twenty twenty, twenty-one tax levy request, which is on page nineteen at twenty-two, just to kinda bring, pay attention to the words, something on there. The next thing is to approve our, our draft budget for twenty twenty-two, which is kinda summarized on the next two pages, um, twenty and twenty-one. And then maybe it's separate, maybe it's a different thing, it's associated with it, and then that's to approve some publication of, of this in the newspaper so that the public has a chance to comment on it before we finalize our budget in, in August. And so the first thing is, um, I don't know, they're kinda chicken and egg, but I guess in order that they are, is on page nineteen is our tax levy. And so you'll notice that, um, it, it said estimated max dollars available is two hundred thirty thousand dollars, eight seventy-seven, which is an increase from what we received this past year. And that's based on changes in the district, uh, population, the consumer price index is kind of the automatic default amount that we get, um, if the projections are right in terms of, of the tax levy, so. Typically as the district population grows and consumer price index changes, we receive a little bit more money before that, um, annual income amount. There is an option to, um, either request more or less than that default amount. Um, since I've been on the board, one year we did request less, but then that sets us back essentially to that as a new baseline, which we start moving forward from, from that year forward, so. Kinda sets you back a little bit. It reduces the volume of money that you have incoming every year and, um, I guess it's anybody's perspective on whether that's a good idea or not, but the default amount, you know, really doesn't amount to a huge amount of tax on individual. Uh, if you look at your tax bills, uh, that come due, you know, twice a year, uh, depending upon your, your property in the district, it's not a huge amount. It's maybe ten or twelve dollars to support the district's efforts. So it's not a significant burden on people. I guess it is a tax and we have to be cognizant of that when we do what we do and we seem to be getting more actively involved in things, so, um, you know, accepting that default amount is maybe a good way to fund our budget going forward. And then the budget going forward, um, maybe as we continue on to that discussion is, let me, let me help you with in terms of how to use, put it together and display it. It shows our, um, current funds available, our anticipated, uh, income, just on that default tax levy for, uh, the upcoming year. And then our, our known expenditures and then I guess the unknown is what we might do, but we're talking about a lot of different things here going forward. So maybe that's where I have you help me, so I don't move it up entirely. Let me see if I can explain this. Um, I'm gonna go right to the spreadsheet here rather than the packet, but this is, the packet should be the same thing. So I, the two, Director Code explained what we're trying to do, and it is a little bit of a chicken and egg. We have to decide on our levy income and then also decide on what we're, how we're gonna spend the money to the best of our ability to estimate that. This, and this is for twenty twenty-two. We go by the calendar year. So without getting into the weeds right away, let me go to the spreadsheet. That's on the means of finance in the lower right-hand corner. It's kinda the bottom line, so, uh, you've, I'm kind of ex- I, I, I'll have to explain where these numbers come from, but the bud- the budgeting from what I'm, what I call appropriations, which my wife told me I'm misusing that term, but that's what was always used by the previous guys, so I keep putting that in there. Appropriations meaning my fee, um, the rent, insurance, everything but projects. So that comes out to be about almost eighty thousand and the, the projects come out to be about, you know, a little less than a hundred fifty-four thousand. So our total budget, again, not getting into the weeds yet, I've got down for about two hundred thirty-three thousand. Okay, so if we take what we have currently and funds on hand and add to that what we expect to receive in revenue, which is primarily the tax levy and a little bit of interest. Our projected funding for twenty twenty-one for this year is almost six hundred sixty-four thousand. And so if we take off, if we assumed our budget was accurate, we still have money to spend. You know, some of that's pretty predictable, like rent and things, and some are not so predictable because next meeting, somebody may decide to spend a hundred thousand dollars on something that would, you know, throw this off, but not that we can't do that. But anyway, if I subtract off what we have expect, expect to spend yet this year, then our projected carryover for twenty twenty-two would be five hundred eighty-seven thousand, so that's, that's actually quite a bit of money. We're still over half a million even with this budget, so, um, and that's repeated down here, so that's, with the assumptions I have here, we would expect to have about five hundred eighty-seven thousand at the end of next year. So let me, if I can stop me if none, this isn't making sense enough yet, it might not until I give it to the actual budget here itself. But, um, but let me just go slide over here, um, for a second, let me aggress a little bit here, but just to give you a little historical perspective and, um, Director Nadal, you don't have this, I'm sorry, but, uh, this is a bar graph. I just plotted our money, the money we spent starts when I started, which was twenty eighteen, is blue for each year and I didn't put twenty twenty-one in there, cause we, we're not done yet, and then the start of the year funds. So you can see we've been increasing over the years and I estimate with this budget, this will probably, you know, be about the same and that's that five hundred eighty-seven thousand number. But just to kinda give you an idea of where, what the trend has been, we've been not spending as much as we've been taking in. So let me go to the actual line items here. So let me go to the actual line items here. And again, this this should be the same in your packet, but starting at the top here, this is all pretty predictable stuff. The board of directors costs with the per diem and mileage, and a little bit of per diem in the salary is, and how, I know how many meetings we're gonna have, so that's about sixty-five hundred, and I threw in about four hundred for travel in case we want to go to Pierre for some conference or something. And that gives us about sixty-nine hundred for the director expenses. Insurance, I kind of highballed a little bit on that, we have been paying about seventeen hundred, but I put in two thousand because I don't know exactly what that invoice is gonna come in. Legal notices, I put in a thousand there. Oh, by the way, this is, I should, I should have said this, this column over here is the budget for twenty twenty-one. This is what we dispersed the date, and this is the proposed budget for twenty twenty-two, so I kind of cut the header off there. What what we're trying to decide on is basically this orange column here, but we have a reference over here to the left. Um so just going down, legal, legal notices are things like announcements in the newspapers. Legal services, um I put in five thousand, now maybe, maybe that's a little high. With the banner thing, we're not gonna, this, that five thousand will not show up in that category.
What's that for?
We have a lawyer, that we have in in past routine for various kinds of things. The most recent thing was some of these conflict of interest issues, and so we had billable time, you know, against his.
Who's, who is it?
It's uh.
Matt.
Matt Nas.
Matt Nas. I'm sorry. Matt Nas.
Matt Nas.
Yeah.
We solicited, um you know, for those services, we we basically got his proposal back, so we accepted it.
We've we've been putting money in that column, whether, just because if something does come up, we've got a budget item for legal services if we need it.
Twenty twenty, we get down probably thirty-six, thirty-seven hundred dollars on legal services. All related to the conflict of interest uh discussion, supposed.
We don't pay, if he doesn't do anything, we don't pay him, so it's not.
Yeah, he's not on retainer.
On retainer, so.
Pardon? He's not on retainer.
Okay.
Just pays, pays for going an hour. Yes, yeah.
There was some work with the state water board, and I forgot the term, um anyway. There were, there was something in addition to that even before.
Yeah, it was.
These available to our offices. Uh so um officer grant, that just comes out to be based on four hundred dollars a month. Membership conferences, um this would include, for example, the West Dakota Hydrology Conference. So, which we normally only pay two thousand for, but there may be some other things, so we put in four thousand there. Um admin stuff, if the computer breaks, printer, um ink, things like that. Uh utilities, we, it's about five hundred dollars a year for a telephone. People even call that anymore.
One thing, Dan, on that four thousand, uh we we do belong to the Rural Waters Association.
Yeah.
Membership, they didn't know who's done it too, is it Eric? Is that the only one?
That, that would include that.
Yeah.
But.
That's where it comes out of.
That's uh, I can't think of anything else on that one.
Hey, Dan.
Yes.
On the admin, um we were talking, um. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry about that, I cut out there for a minute. Um on the admin thing, we were talking about the enhancements to the website, so just wondering if the admin budget is inclusive of any predictable costs there? Or maybe projected costs there?
Yeah, yes, I did throw in a little extra, assuming we're gonna do that.
Okay, cool.
It was like five hundred dollars or something, I think I put in there.
Okay.
Um so total, that's totals those items to about twenty thousand. And then we have, generally, we have this contingency fund, which we really haven't used as as a line item like that, but just in case the computer goes up in smoke or something, and maybe we might need a little more, or we, the printer needs to be replaced, something like that, so. We have five thousand in that, I think, in that category. And then there's my contract, which I just, um we just renewed in April, so I just put that in there, assuming that will go up the whole year. And that totals then to about seventy-nine thousand, so. The, these are all fairly predictable numbers, and this may be a little bit high, but I don't think it's that far off. So then the next grouping is the projects. And we really don't, don't have too much, we, we got some advice from Jay Gilbertson a couple of years ago. And I hope I'm quoting you correctly, but uh his recommendation was to basically put in things that are pretty certain and not try to guess at things that you don't know about. Well, the Green Valley, that's not an absolute until, you know, they actually do certain things, but it's probably, it's very likely we're gonna have to come up, come up with a hundred twenty-five thousand. Um USGS, we just approved that, so I'm kind of a pro, I put that in there, assuming that would be the case. And then the Western Hydrology Conference, that tends to be just a regular item too, so those are really all we have for line items uh for twenty twenty-two. Other than to make a balanced budget, in other words, what we take in is what we budget to spend. With, it's not a legal requirement at all, but we have this item in here we call unobligated project funds, so. If we, in other words, if we spent these three first items, the Green Valley stream gate, sorry, stream flow, the hydrology conference, we would have, based on our income, if we only had our income available, we'd have ten thousand nine hundred seventy-two left, so that's just a line item kind of put in there to make things, numbers come out, so that we have a perfectly balanced budget. And that, that gives us total projects then of just under a hundred fifty-three thousand, and total budget of just under two hundred thirty-three thousand. So that's where, when when I started, that's where these numbers on the means of income side of things, means of finance, that's where those numbers came from. So I I hope that made sense, that's kind of the bottom line, um we've spent to date this year about a hundred forty-three thousand, which um leaves us with the project. We have a project on spent to date, and we also have some admin on spent to date. Um then, but keep in mind, we have currently projects, we're on the hook for about almost two hundred fourteen thousand. But if we take out the Green Valley, which will happen next year, then we're only, this year, we're only on the hook for eighty-eight thousand six hundred seventy-one, which kind of actually comes out to be pretty close to what we budgeted last year just by luck, and then. Not saying that has to come out that close, but uh anyway.
Do you anticipate by the end of the year that uh the twenty twenty-one budget column and the twenty twenty-one dispersed column will equal each other? Or we're gonna end up with money left out of the budget?
It it looks like they'll be pretty close to me, assuming we don't really do a lot more for projects. So for purposes of, I'm guess getting into a discussion on this, you know, process, what I'll do is I'll make a motion that we um we approve the twenty twenty-one tax levy request as shown on page nineteen, and the budget summary, and the budget as shown on page twenty and twenty-one of the packet. And that we uh approve uh approve our administrator to pursue publishing in official newspapers of these items um for two consecutive weeks as required by law.
That's your motion?
That's my motion, so we can kind of get into the.
Okay, is your second motion?
I'll say.
I second.
Second, anyway.
Either, either way.
Alright, we've got a motion on the floor, discussion.
Where did the five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars we have come from?
Past years, I would say.
It just accumulated over time.
Yes, yeah, that, he showed that.
Unspent tax revenue.
Yes, correct, yeah. There, you know, I've been on the board, now this is my fourth year, uh the first couple of years I was on the board, we didn't spend any money. And they, and they did cut it back, uh was that two years ago?
No, three.
Three, three, three years ago, they, they cut back the levy by about thirty-seven thousand, back to two hundred thousand, so now we're starting to build that back up uh over the last three, three years, am I right, Tom?
Yeah.
Did you have a comment, Jay?
Yes, at Stalin Forum, you don't care. I know you're, I think you're recording this.
Yeah.
I mean, the purpose of of today is to simply authorize the publication of a draft budget. Now, Rod, I know you, not what you necessarily intended to say, but what you said was motion to approve the tax levy and to approve the budget. You cannot do that until you hold the public hearing.
Okay.
That has to happen, you don't adopt the budget, you don't adopt the the levy, you don't do any of that officially until after the public hearing, which I think you guys do in August. This is simply, the board has reviewed this, presented draft, there has to be a published, there have to be numbers published along with the formal notice of the budget hearing.
That was the last part of his motion, though.
Uh yeah, I know, he just, I started talking before he got going.
I think he sanitized it already.
Did he already sanitize it? So it's clear, yeah, the the mo, today's motion is simply to say, we've gone over the numbers, it's a good starting point, go ahead and publish them after the public hearing, then you will make the final decision.
Right.
So what I have here is motion by Code, seconded by Nat Nadigal, to direct admin to publish an abbreviated form of the draft budget and the proposed tax levy in the legal note newspapers prior to the August budget meeting in accordance with South Dakota codified law.
Perfect. Any question, any, any discussion on the motion?
And what, the reason I put abbreviated form, I'm not gonna put, I I used to put a lot in there, and then I talked to Jay, and he said, no, just put in a few things, and.
What's, what constitutes the abbreviated draft?
Is this it? Is this what you're looking at, what's on page twenty?
I'd have to pull up the past year. It has a lot of the expense of formatting things in a legal, for a legal, legal announcement, so I.
But is this basically what it's going to be, just?
Yeah, I I probably should have brought up, I can maybe bring up an example here from previous years, let's see here.
Dan, if I, I could just offer up, just converting this to art format in my head here, um the the draft budget would have under expenditures, maybe like five or six major headings, director expense, administration, professional services, contingency, prior committed or project expense, which you could maybe break into prior committed, in other words, things like Green Valley. You've made the commitment, and until you undo that award, that's stuck, and then the last one would be uncommitted project. So there you've got, what's that, four, six, six different columns and then a number? And then of the means of finance side, it would be, you know, twenty twenty-two ta, tax levy, um miscellaneous interest, and then maybe a a final category could be, you know, would be sort of carryover, because a hundred and twenty-five that you give to Green Valley was last year's money. And so that starts to burn, I mean, you could, a couple of different ways you could do that, it doesn't have to be line by line by line by line.
Okay.
Yeah, what what Jay said.
Gotcha. Everybody hear that?
It's it's pretty expensive to try to get something in a table format, so that's one of the issues too.
As long as we're legal.
We're, we're basically publishing a draft budget, not a balance sheet.
Yeah, yeah, this is the bu, and that was some, something else.
Well, I think, I think those CDs and projected funds on hand numbers should come out of there from last year.
Yeah, they.
I mean, why, why publish that we have, you know, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that's a balance sheet number, not a budget number.
Yeah, this is just.
Well, they apparently were in there last year from what I'm looking at here.
No, this, this is not what.
That's not what was.
This is mainly for um to know where those numbers came from.
I'm looking at a notice of public hearing to adopt FY twenty twenty-one budget. Means of finding CDs, projected funds on hand, tax revenue and interest. Total means of finding it's seven hundred fifty-two, two thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars.
This, this is in the packet?
Where, where are you reading that?
I think it's something I pulled off our website or something.
When I started exploring this budget process.
Okay. Um there's, there's something we also have to send, we have to send something to the state of South Dakota, and that might be what you're looking at there.
He's got it right there.
Yeah, okay.
And that's published? If that's what got published, then we publish the fact that we have basically a reserve of five hundred sixty-four thousand dollars, which to me is not part of the budget.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I'd have to pull up what we actually sent to the newspaper, I don't think it was this involved.
Where, where did you get that, Scott?
I got it off our website, or maybe I got it from the state, I don't know, I only call uphand print work here.
Cause I do, I do put those announcements on our website too, but whether that's exactly, whether that's what went in the newspaper, so I I can simplify it even more.
Well, I would just say, I don't think what goes in the newspaper shouldn't go to those, those.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I could just comment on that, I had similar questions when I first got going a thousand years ago. And the conversations both the Secretary of State's office and also kind of the treasurer folks, it was, the budget is what, what do you plan to do next year?
Yeah.
Because what I was inclined to do, because the money was there, was to show all of our available funds in the unobligated pot. Could, because again, theoretically, next year, you all could decide to burn through all five hundred and eighty-seven dollars, five hundred eighty-seven, fifty and eighty-eight cents, if something really cool came along, you're not, you're probably not gonna do that, but.
Could happen.
But you did.
Could happen.
It could happen.
And they were like, no, what do you think you're gonna spend, so if you wanna take some of. So if you want to take some of that, five, six hundred thousand, plug it into next year's budget, so you've got money at your disposal, go ahead. You know, but the rest of the reserves are not in the budget and therefore aren't part of the public notice.
But they don't have to be part of the budget extended if we so decided someplace.
Yeah, you could decide to say, hey, look, we've got a unique circumstance, you know, somebody's come up with a cure for the common cold and we want to pay for it, you just make an action, but in a general sense, here's what, you know, and that's part of our, our budget will have that. It's got a, a line item for capital funds transfer. We're taking out of our reserve and then plugging in a hundred and twenty thousand. Yeah, that looks a whole lot like, yeah, I know exactly, yes, I've seen that one. That's ours. Yeah, and so, yeah, you, you've got the whole bunch there and, yeah, that gets to be a problem. Cause to balance, if you want to balance it, then yeah, it all goes into available funds, and again, although the board's certainly free to do that, my case, it's taken me twenty eight years to build up a war chest, we were actually in the hole when I took over. We've got a healthy war chest right now, but again, that's twenty eight years. The board wants to spend it all tomorrow, that's their prerogative, but I'm not gonna remind them.
So this is what you would would have published?
That looks a whole lot, I, I mean, I, that looks, makes perfect, that looks just like what I.
I was gonna say, you gave me some things.
I'm sure that was, yeah, the format's all there, yeah, abbreviated columns and other stuff, but.
I think our means of finance would simply be the tax revenue, the interest, and then you go down to the expenses, which are the operating costs of seventy thousand, seventy nine thousand, and project costs of one fifty three, that's what I published. Maybe break it down within administrative expenses a little to what, you know, your, your contract or rent or whatever you want to do.
Are you unclear as you wish, you should be, or?
Well, I I guess I need somebody to tell me what to do, if that's, you're saying that's too much.
I think this is fine, if you just get rid of the CD and funds on hand stuff and just go with in terms of means of finance, the tax levy is two hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred and seventy seven and the interest of two thousand. And then the expenses you've got equal that. So the other categories are fine, and the appropriation of directors, administrations, professional services, and project expenses, the screen gauges, Green Valley, unobligated.
Yeah.
Okay, so if the board wants me, I can just go by the Director McGregor saying he could just
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Strike out, but you don't think should be on there, not do that.
I'm fine with that, has anybody else had projected that? Nobody?
You know, I, it, it sounds like I, I just did what Jay did, so I'm not justifying it other than.
He would do it separately, but that's all right.
Yeah.
Bottom line is today is simply a draft.
It's twenty eight years.
After we're numbers in the paper, put them in the paper.
Okay.
I don't think the motion has to be changed, um.
No.
No, I just wanted to know what was.
Just to, just to the details. All right, sounds like we're ready to to vote on the motion. Seeing no more discussion. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Hold the same sign, motion carried, thank you very much. All right.
I can tell you exactly where I got that, it was out of the July fourteenth, twenty twenty packet. Item fourteen, page thirty four, thirty eight, I just copied and pasted in the larger font.
I got one item under serious comments. Since we were talking about budget and Green Valley, I did reach out to Interstate Engineers, engineering, who is the engineer on the Green Valley sanitary district project to find out how they're coming with their financing. The last time we got a report from, they did not have all their financing lined up. Talking to Ron Bangs, who's, he's a project engineer, he says they still haven't finalized the, the, all the money that they're getting yet. Rural Water, or Rural Development, I should say, has, has tentatively approved some monies, but it's not in writing. But, uh, so I asked him, you know, what is it looking like this project, is he gonna vote in twenty twenty two, and he said, yes. The D E N, D A N R has agreed to give him some monies for engineering work to start working on the design and that they're proposing to, or he said they're planning on starting in September of this year with a bid of earning next year and construction starting in twenty twenty two, so it's looking like if I, if he stays on that schedule, it looks like they would be expending our monies that we've budgeted for reported on for their project in twenty twenty two. That's all I have, is there any items from directors? Seeing none, admin.
I think we've pretty much covered everything. We've got the Banner nonprofit meeting tomorrow, you're gonna be there, right?
Yeah, I will be there, yes, nine o'clock.
There's food there, so I figured you'd be.
Yeah, I'll be there.
And then we talked about the website, so I'll talk to Director Rowan, we'll maybe try to decide the best route there regarding the upgrades and maybe improving it. And uh that's all I have.
All right. That moves to items from public. I understand we have one item from the public.
Yes.
Jay Gilbertson, Jay Gilbertson, East Dakota Water Development District.
Uh, yes, Jay Gilbertson, a manager of the East Dakota Water Development District. Um, on my semi, well, pretty much, I got away from more of a July, so my annual trip out here.
Yeah, we appreciate you.
To to visit the board and other activity. A couple of things, and one, I, I passed it around this article. Now, if any of you get the quality of that magazine published by South Dakota Rural Water, this was in the most recent edition.
Next time bring the beer, man.
Everybody has said that. And there's, and that's part, the reason I can't is the reason I'm here. This was started as, as if you've read the article, I had a chance to look through it, I'd have heard about it. The Friends of the Big Sioux River, which is a Sioux Falls based group looking to be friendly to the Big Sioux River, uh, and and their logo is that little circle with what should look like an otter uh in the middle of it on the label. Got together with the folks at Remedy Brewing, which is one of nine different craft brewers in Sioux Falls, and they came up with the idea of making, as it says, making a beer out of water from the river. Now, the city currently draws water from the river, so you could make the argument it already was, but this was a little more special. They went out and collected the water, ran it through a ver- uh, an RO reverse osmosis filtration system, came out cleaner than clean, and then they made Big Sioux Brew, which was a Kolsch style beer, for those of you who know the lingo. Uh, very clear, very clean looking, that's what they were after. Uh, as, as has been noted here, you know, like going for a cloudy IPA or a porter might have hit a little too, too close to home for most people. Well, that's, yeah, it's river water, I'm not drinking that. Anyway.
Floating on top.
Yeah, you could, you know, junk, you know, stuff floating in the water was, they, they were going for a cleaner. The rollout was for Earth Day, uh, which was technically the, Thursday, the twenty second of April on the twenty fourth. They tapped the kegs in concert with a whole series of, of river cleanup activities that were going on around Sioux Falls that come down to Remedy and have a beer and the whole nine yards. Talked to the brewer, the batch they made, they anticipated lasting at least a month based on past experience. They barely made it a week. Half of it went out the door the first day, the people who came in, and and the rest of it was pretty much gone. I went down two or three days later and bought a four pack, much like is pictured here, uh, the last of which was consumed in Vermillion about a month or so ago, at a retirement for a couple of, well, Clark Christiansen. You would, you would know Clark, and who, whose response was, oh, God, no, I'm not drinking that river. But anyway, uh, it was phenomenally successful. And when it came out and I immediately started asking some questions about, well, how do we do more of this? And and go from there. Remedy is so happy and Big Sioux are so happy, they're making another beer, a different style for River Fest or River Days in Sioux Falls next month. That we think, I suspect will be called El Rio. Cause the Big Sioux Brew is something different, and then next spring, they want to do Big, Big Sioux Brew again with a much bigger production run, because it was so popular. My thinking is, we have twenty nine craft breweries in South Dakota, according to a quick survey this afternoon of, of the web. All of them are inside water development, well, no, not quite. Many of them are inside water development districts, most of them are inside water development districts. There, we're all involved in water issues, clean water. What this did was raise the attention or raise the awareness of water, river water quality with everybody, a whole group of people who don't normally get involved in these kinds of things. So we've started conversations with brewers in Watertown. There are two Brookings, there are two, there are nine in Sioux Falls and two more in the hinterlands around Sioux Falls. Uh, I talked with the folks in Armour, South Dakota, there is a brewer in Armour. Uh, there are two in Yankton. Rural Wagner, Choto Creek, Geddes, for God's sakes. Geddes, Armour and Rural Wagner. Who knew? All, all of whom, so anyway, we're looking at doing some. The big hurdle right now in some ways is the water itself. Turns out, because they sold these cans, the water use was commercial. The fact that they only used three hundred gallons was immaterial. It was a commercial use. They should have had a water rate. When they draw water next, when we draw water at the end of the month for the El Rio Brew, we will do so under the auspices of the City of Sioux Falls Surface Water Withdrawal Permit. Even if they have to turn on the intake for us, they'll, they agree to do that. So we're look, I'm looking into how would we get the wa- the necessary permits to do this all over the place next year. And whether it's next spring or springs down the line, I want to go at least basin wide in East Dakota next spring, if not full of East River. And there are, by my, what did I just, did a quick head count? There are six breweries here in Rapid City and two more down in Hill City. Minor and.
One in Lead, Deadwood, no, two, isn't there?
Yeah, that's outside, yeah. Shivers Steve's got a brewery up at, up at Lead and there's several, Crow Creek and and Sawyer.
Crow Peak.
Crow Peak, Crow Peak.
Sawyer and British Brewing.
And Spearfish and some Knuckles. Yeah, I was looking, I mean, they're, they're everywhere and we're all doing stuff. Most of them had, I stopped at Armour today, I was talking to the guy and said, you know, name it after a water buddy, oh, well, we've already got one. They have a Alcazar Honey Ale, which meant nothing to me, but apparently the pond in Lyons Park in Armour is Alcazar Lake. Okay, we'll pull water out of Alcazar Lake, filter it, and you can make your beer.
I think we might have lost it in here.
So, anyway, that was just sort of a it's a developing, outreachy sort of thing, non-traditional sort of, I don't know, I want to say outside the box. They, they were thinking outside the box, I want to make the box as big as humanly possible. Talked to the James River guys last week, the chairman took my card and he's gonna have one of the Yankton brewers call me, uh, Director Bauer from up there works for the water plant, they have a portable RO unit, and he's gonna give it to us, cause Aberdeen hasn't used it. Plus, they have a permit for the Elm River, so we'll see about that. But anyway, it's just kind of a neat little thing that took off far more than anybody believed. And so maybe next.
But this water came from Watertown, not Sioux Falls?
No, this water, yeah, yeah, the article Rebecca kind of messed that up a little bit, she's from Millbank, so she, everything's out of order. No, the, the water was, was drawn from the river, uh, if you're familiar, at the Twenty Sixth Street canoe landing, just upstream of the falls. And so given the time of the year, that would have been river water. You do that today, that's Skunk Creek, because they've closed the gates. But they, they drew it out, went back to the plant, set up, ran it through the filter, filtered, dumped it into a tank at the brewery and.
Gives a whole meaning to Skunk Beer.
Well, you have, again, uh, Alcazar Honey Ale. Wooden Lakes Brewery Company in, in Brookings makes a Split Rock Creek Pale Ale. Okay, well, how'd you like to make Split Rock Ale with real Split Rock water? And so forth, and so there's Campeska, there's a stout named after Lake Campeska, there's a pale ale named after Lake Pelican. Minor has a, a muddy mow sort of thing. And most of them don't, out here frankly, aren't named after water bodies, which just means it's open. Somebody's gonna do Rapid Creek something or Spring Creek or Box Elder Creek or whatever else, Canyon Lake.
Tactolaport.
Tactolaport, there you go. So anyway, that's just, I wanted to kind of throw that out here while I was here.
That's funny.
Uh, and we'll see how it goes. The water rates frankly are getting to be a big deal. Uh, and we're trying to come up with a, a rationale that they would give me a temporary permit under a, under the guise of testing a novel public outreach activity. At the minimum, Alcazar Lake would cost three hundred, it'd be three hundred bucks to get a permit for what we would take. And again, it's not a bad investment, if, particularly if they continue, if they don't, that's a lot of three hundred dollar permits that I don't necessarily want to have versus free, which you can get a, a temporary permit for like a aquifer pump test, which Dan will recall, will run at least twenty four hours and could pump thousands, you know, five hundred or thousand gallons a minute. Well, thirty seconds of that pump test is all the water we need. And they want, want me to pay three hundred bucks for it, whether they'll let Dan do a pump or the Federals do a pump test for nothing. So we're gonna get that fixed. But once we get past that, then, we, we don't think we have any aquatic invasive species issues. There was a brewery over in Minnesota that took zebra mussels out of Lake Minnetonka, ground up tiny, a little bit, put it in a beer, and all hell broke loose. Cause again, it was one of, oh, that sounds kind of cool, isn't that neat, and then the DNR was not impressed. We have enough trouble with these, don't be screwing around with that sort of stuff, so. Anyway, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. Uh, the other thing I just mentioned about the travel, again, with some new members from the board and, and COVID, uh, for about the last decade or a little more, the in January, uh, East Dakota and the James River Water Development Districts have been gotten into a trend of holding their board meetings in pier in conjunction with the opening of the legislative session and the South Dakota Rural Water Association's annual technical conference. We were all out there for it anyway, and why am I getting, why am I paying to send all these guys to pier and then bringing them all to Brookings the next week? So we started doing that. We obviously didn't do that last year. We'll be, I think, deciding at our meeting on Thursday that we're gonna go back to that. And so I think it's the twelfth of January. I don't know how far ahead your calendars go, but I think the twelfth, and the problem with, with your schedule was you guys were always meeting the night of the Tuesday.
Yes.
So at six o'clock, and you're getting, we're done, I'm watching the clock very closely here.
Yeah.
A two and a half hour West Dakota meeting is just.
I, I told the executive board to give you a half an hour.
Okay. No, no, I'm kidding, anyway, I'm just gonna say, we're, we're, I, I all, considering, Dave Bartel and I were talking last week, we're starting, we're gonna make room reservations, get everything set, so uh, if your January meeting ends up being on the eleventh at three o'clock, you're not getting done, you're getting done at a time where you could easily make it over to pier. On that day, our historic model has been eight to ten, seven to ten in the morning, we have a legislative breakfast with water development districts, we have coffee and rolls in the speaker's lobby and the president's lobby of the Capitol Building. in the speaker's lobby and the president's lobby of the Capitol Building. Uh, posters that we'll put up and Dan's got those things. And we get reasonably good attendance. And then late morning will be East Dakota's Board. Early afternoon will be James River's Board with a lunch in between. And you're all welcome to come and participate in that. Uh, and then that follows with the big open legislative open house over at the ATC.
Yeah.
We look to get back to that, Dan, you came out a couple of times.
Yeah, I've been out a couple of times and, and it's, it's good for board members to see how, how the other two districts run their meetings and, and they also have some very good speakers.
Yeah, we try and bring in, cause it's, it's the annual meeting, so we're setting, you know, doing the scheduling, a lot of that stuff. But then if we have somebody else come in, it'll be, this year, we'll, hopefully Secretary Roberts come in and tell us. But talks that would be of interest to both boards, not necessarily district specific activities, but things that would be of interest to everybody.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good experience to go to that.
So anyway, I just put that on everybody's radar. Unless you quit, you all will still be part of the board come January, so.
Well, thanks for coming again and good to see you. Any, we've got two more memories in public, anything?
I, I was wondering if there were any quick updates on the Riparian Buffer.
Uh, the Riparian Buffer Initiative, which was also in this edition of the Quality on Fat Magazine. The South Dakota Department of Ag and Natural Resources submitted a grant, or submitted their grant to the US Department of Agriculture on the 28th of May, 9,000, seeking 9,099,999 dollars. Don't ask. A match of 4 million, which included 3 million from the legislature, a half a million from game fish and parks, a quarter million from D A N R, and a quarter million split between East Dakota and James River. We do not anticipate having, finding out about that, whether the grant's gonna be accepted until October. I think it'll be rejected. If it's accepted, the new monies probably, we, we would be lucky if the new money was available this time next year. It takes forever for that stuff to get processed. And unfortunately, all of the money that's committed as match, including the 3 million from the legislature, cannot be spent until the final federal grant is locked down. And so even though the money is available today for us to spend in the Big Sioux, in this case, we can't touch it unless the state, if you spend a half a million dollars today, that's a half million you may have to backfill at some point later. We'll see what happens. But the intent is to provide a Riparian Buffer program similar to, you know, CRP to provide protections. Targeted segments would basically be, uh, out here, it's Rapid Creek from below Pactola. It's the final three segments. So I'm gonna guess it goes at least.
The impaired waterway?
It's the last, I, let's say from Canyon Lake all the way down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There are three segments in there.
Yes, there are.
Better part of it. Those are our priority water bodies. The funds to do it here would come from the federal grant or other funds. Obviously, our money isn't gonna get spent in Rapid Creek. James River money isn't gonna get spent in Rapid Creek. And the 3 million from the legislature has to be spent in the Big Sioux Basin. But if our money, you know, they take our money and leverage another 9 million from the feds, that can be spent anywhere and will be. That's how, that's how funding would be provided out here in this district.
Good.
So we'll see.
Thanks for the update on that. Nothing, Barry? All right, the rest of history's a morsel during the journey. Anybody?
I'll make the motion.
Linda? Tom? Home parent of a jury? I think the same eye. All right. Meeting's over. Thanks for everybody for coming, thanks for the updates. And Wendy's gone. She missed. I was wondering if you had some of that beer in that can over there.
No. No, although it does say this is a beer blank.